Welcome to the special council meeting dated Monday, April 3rd, 2023 at 4:40 PM. In council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on additional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House, First Nation, and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of Algonquin, Anishewabe, Ojibwe, Cree, and Métis people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Call to order in a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Moved by Councilor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councilor LaShaba. We have resolved the agenda for the special meeting of council regarding the 2023 budget held on Monday, April 3rd, 2023, be approved as circulated. And finally, the 232-82 of the Town of Kirkland Lake's procedural bylaw number 1575, as amended, we suspended permit ad hoc questions of clarification from council participants for reason they were leading to item 6.1. 2023 capital budget presentations.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? I know we're very unanimous. Item number three, declaration of pecuniary interest. Nones noted. Item number four, petitions and delegations, there are none. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations, there also are none at this time. I will now call Councilor Janice Ranger to come take my share as finance chair.
So under municipal reports of municipal officers and communication, 6.1, 2023 capital budget presentation. Alan Smith, chief administrative officer, order of presentation by Lloyd Crocker, treasurer. Number one question stemming from public meeting to council, or council to staff. And number two, capital budget presentation 2023-FIN-03 recommendation that council received in 2023 capital budget presentation for information purposes.
Uh, you have the chair, uh, I'm just gonna actually hand it with things to Lloyd right away. Can you start things off? That brings the fun.
Thank you, you madam chair, and the councillors and mayor. So, the CVs are, uh, my plan is a little bit different. I'm very open to what you guys have to, you know, if you want to move things around or change things a little bit. I was gonna just kind of work our way through the budget itself. And if there's, you know, each line, questions, comments, kind of thing, into the bottom. I do want to kind of remind you all, we talked about this a couple of times, but last year we had the asset management plan, which was focused on infrastructure, which you won't see much of that tonight, other than the paving project. And some of the aqua stuff would be probably characterized as infrastructure as well. But a lot of this is equipment and repairs and that kind of stuff. And we're working on that right now, the equivalent asset management plan for the other half of our, our world. I'm working, working quite far along now. And we're kind of at the financing stage where they're asking questions about how we normally pay for things. That kind of stuff. I'm giving you the heads up because you've seen a 10-year plan in our, two meetings ago, I guess it was. And the asset management plan is also kind of part of what ties into this a little bit. So when you're making your choices about what comes and goes, or whatever, wherever you get to, keeping in mind that some of this stuff already kind of matches up with the equipment asset management plan, even though it hasn't been released yet, it isn't finalized. And, and that's kind of the thinking you may want to kind of keep in the back of your, back of your heads is, you know, all of this stuff at one point or another needs to be replaced. And we're, we're trying to kind of create some structure there so that we don't get caught off guard every year or kind of get behind on what needs to happen to keep our equipment and everything else and working order and moving along. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of remind you that we're, we're also in behind all this process. We're trying to build up the database and the information you're going to need, not just for this year, but for several years to come. Um, so I guess if you're open to it, um, we can start kind of going through the, through the capital budget. Okay? So, I don't know what the proper procedure will be, but I'll start with the first one. Anybody has any comments, please just let me know and we'll work our way down. So, agreeable to everybody? Okay, here you go. Okay, so we have the front end wheel holder. There's a, and of course, in your hand, there was descriptions, which is the kind of the short form reasoning why it's on the budget this year. Um, so again, if you have questions. Okay? Uh, sorry, go ahead.
Do you, madam chair, is the treasurer? Um, just a quick overview of the, um, like where the funding is coming from.
Yeah.
Um, this word says other, um, just that, I guess that's where I need more screen.
Yeah, let me. So down below, just for future reference, down below, there's like a little kind of a gray area where you see these notes over on the side, like six in this, five or six, I think it is in this case. And down below, when there's other or specific reserves we're talking about, we try to identify them for you, okay? So in this case, it's, it's essentially.
Standard lease financing.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, exactly, lease finance.
You have the chair, uh, so that means we're borrowing.
Yeah, and what'll happen is going forward, assuming it, it's fine. The annual budget in the, in the works department will bear the cost of those lease payments. It'll become part of their budget, be a line item in their budget.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, so the next one is the compactor, the gravel compactor. That one's part of the tax levy grouping. And see the descriptions over on the far right. Okay? Uh, the auto system station tweets mirror, again, another tax levy item. It means I keep moving. Uh, traffic controller and cabinet in Duncan. So this one, you say this what we just lived through?
Yeah.
Right.
Chair, um, now this pace for the one we replaced this year.
Yes.
We all know they're old, we all know they're anything temperamental. The one on Station Road starts to flash at 5:30. So it, it goes out of commission really, really early when it's still high traffic. Do we plan on just waiting until they go as well, or do we?
There's a plan for one a year to replace it, anything that's old.
What happens though? Answer me, I'm, but yeah, yeah, I get the one a year.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that budget covers another one.
Yeah.
Versus the one we were just forced to do.
Yeah.
Not sure.
But you know they're old.
Stefan's gonna make the walk.
Blake?
Yeah, for the traffic controller, we were, for the past few years, we wanted to replace the one on Kirkland Street. And there was always another one that would fail before we'd get to that. Where last year was the one on Prospect that failed. So we took the controller that was supposed to go to Kirkland, put it on Prospect, and the same exact thing happened this year. We were planning to do the one in Kirkland again and Duncan there. So the funds for this is going towards Duncan and next year we're trying to get Kirkland Street.
Uh, to finance chair, to Stefan. Councilor Owens mentioned that it starts flashing at 5:30, they're programmable, are they not?
Yes, I believe that Station Road is programmed that way.
So we could change, if, if we felt that it necessary, we could change the program to flash at later time of day or an earlier time of day or whatever. Okay, thank you.
When I first moved to Kirkland, they used to start to flash at 9:30. Now, I mean, if it's a high traffic area, 9, 5:30, so I know we're all popping, right? Open the door. I'm just.
We can review the current times, I'm not exactly, exactly what time they do go on and which time they go off. But we can definitely take a look into that and program it, otherwise.
Go ahead. Um, the coal per clean tool? Sorry, do we go ahead?
No, no, you're right on the spot. Through you, finance chair, Stefan. I know the guys will hate you for this, the frontline workers, but it's only rated a number one, the lowest priority. And in a year, I know it's only, uh, it, it's just over $8,000, but in a year when we're looking at over 4% increase in taxes, I'm wondering if that's something that maybe we couldn't put off till next year when we have, say, a 3% increase in taxes, just a suggestion. I know on its own, that doesn't make a big percentage difference, but as we go, I've got other suggestions.
Okay, so I guess at this point, that's part of next week's meeting, the actual decision.
That's right, yeah.
What's on or off the list?
Yeah, but, yeah. Just a point of order. I'm allowed to, to raise these points at this meeting, right, to make my suggestions at this meeting?
You, madam chair, all council, questions of clarification this evening, or budget, yes?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, ball trailer and board compactor. So that one's coming out of reserve funds? Questions? The pedestrian crosswalk at Federal Public School?
Through you, madam chair, in communication with your predecessor in the department, when you guys turned on the one on Queen's, Queen Street, some residents reached out to me that there was issues with the one on, uh, Second Street about cars missing it and going, and I see from my classroom on a daily basis. In his response, Jim had sent to me that the department was pricing out additional poles.
Also, we're sure, sure, they were gonna buy more poles to make it more visible when we come down. I don't see that in budget, is that still a thing for this year, or is that on a window?
Uh, through my mayor.
I'm just the chair.
Yes, the equipment has been purchased, it's gonna be custom installation. It's considered a minor repair, but yes, we are going to add additional lights and additional art with the idea of bringing the light closer to the edge of the road.
Perfect, okay. One is to pick up trucks.
Councilor Owen?
Yes, through you, finance chair, uh, to Stefan, and again, this is just a suggestion, but in my first term of council, um, we had this discussion with the then CBO that he did not need a pickup truck to do his job. Um, and he agreed that he would use a car. Unfortunately, that never happened, so we have a pickup truck uh, assigned to the CBO that's only three years old, approximately. Can we not transfer that pickup truck from CBO to the Works Department and then purchase a car which would cost less to purchase and less to operate?
Through the council, yes, that is an option. Um, I don't believe that the CBO is in need of a pickup truck. However, a four-by-four vehicle is recommended, whether being a car that's all they drive or a smaller SUV, it would be ideal, but no pickup truck wouldn't be needed for a CBO.
So, um. Thank you.
And one drainage issue on Balsam Avenue. Also for reserve funds. Come on, bring the mixer.
Councilor Shaba, can you hear us?
Oh, yeah. Can you hear me?
Your sander spreader for a pickup truck?
Councilor?
Tax levy?
Um, does the town currently, all many, in any department?
I believe that, uh, the Parks and Rec Department owns one for their own purposes, yes.
Well, could that not be used by the Works Department as well?
I cannot speak for another department.
Well, I think it should be something that's taken into consideration that they're all town vehicles. They gotta break down silos and use them to the maximum efficiency.
More questions? Uh, the whole reconstruction of Taylor Avenue, this is the engineering design. The asphalt replacement contract. So in, in my short description earlier, this would be an infrastructure project. This is why you see the funding coming out of gas tax.
Councilor Owens, do you have a question?
Yes, through you, madam chair, in the description for this, it identifies that the, through the 10-year plan, over last summer, several areas in town got dug up to fix pipes or whatever. And just walking into town hall today, it was a navigation challenge around the potholes. Are these ones gonna be like that one, Balsam, and two other ones I noticed? Are they gonna be fixed this year?
Uh, any patchwork is done for operating, but.
That's operating, okay.
And it is planned to be done every year, assuming availability from the contract.
Okay.
The next one is the pelican sweeper. Yes. Brought my ruler, reserve funds. Okay? Two. Next one is the char infrastructure, which has been before council with some of the details related to the project. Primarily funded out of, it's outside funding for most of it. Some questions? Okay, uh, airport card lock system, is there a reserve funds?
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, um, I have a few questions concerning this. Is this gonna save us a great deal of money or increase our revenues by a great amount of money?
Yeah, so, uh, my understanding is it's, oh, you save us all, save us some money. And the, there's, I guess there's no way to particularly prove this, but if it's easier to buy fuel at this airport instead of having to wait for somebody to show up to kind of unlock the fuel system and get it ready, in theory, you might get some more usage as well. Um, anyways, that's, that's kind of what I heard.
Yeah, well, the reason I'm asking, I'm concerned that, about investing that much money, um, without some sort of guaranteed payback at a facility where we're losing about $150,000 a year. That's why I brought that up.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the numbers associated with, with the savings or anything like that. So I couldn't tell you about a return on investment.
No, that's fair, and I didn't mean to put down the steel.
No, I don't mind.
Any other questions?
Okay. Uh, the arena sound system, coming out of the tax levy. Okay. Uh, bear number one ball field lighting. It's coming out of reserve funds.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, I have a question, have we had complaints about the lighting at, at this facility? I know it lowers the cost, but again, I'm thinking in terms of our percentage increase in taxes this year and looking for ways of bringing it down.
The sacrator is coming out.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, through you, madam chair, she was probably helpful, yes, we have had complaints. What's happening is we can't offer, um, evening game, like evening games once the sun sets, set.
I see the lights on there all the time.
Uh huh, but what's happening is they're not, they, they, the breaker is kicking them out and therefore they've had stop games sometimes because they don't have enough light, yeah. No, no, that's fine, thanks, Bonnie. You know, man, I don't want to spend money. That's okay.
Okay, the next one is the boiler repair. That's coming out of reserve funds. Okay? Four scrubber. It's coming out of the tax levy. Next one's the, the upgrades at the complex, I guess maybe, body, do you want? We will.
Certainly, um. So this is, um, some infrastructure dollars that the town has been chosen to receive and there will be further information provided, um, with the direct communication from the federal government on this grant.
The, the next one is the ice research center, the Olympia.
Councilor Owen?
Uh, through you, finance chair, to, to sacrator, um. I have real concerns about this expense for a number of reasons. I know there are advantages to having an electric one, that goes without a question. But that piece of equipment is used for 10 minutes, an hour, when the facility is in use. Um, it's used for six months of the year approximately. It does not have to endure our Kirkland Lake roads, so in terms of springs and suspension and alignment and all that kind of thing, it's an ideal situation. Um. I'm not gonna mention user groups, but you, you are aware, and I am aware, that some user groups, uh, at least one of them is hanging on by a thread.
Um, is there a question? Okay.
I want a little justification.
Thank you.
Through you, madam chair, to Councilor Owen and the rest of council. Um, so when you look at what the industry is recommending to us, they are recommending whatever comes first, so either eight years or 5,000 hours. So we have not hit the hour, you're correct on that. We've surpassed the years by two years. This is the one that will make me lose sleep because the, um, the turnaround in, once you order one, is between six and eight months. So if we do lose the ability to use the current Olympia because we've surpassed life expectancy, we will lose the whole life saving. So they're not like a piece, it's not like buying a new vehicle where you can go out and you might not get the exact one you want, but you get something else. So we have a very long time to turn around. Um, so that's the rationalization for the purchasing one now. When you're looking at the rationalization for buying the more expensive one, definitely there's a, there's a larger cost. If we say that life expectancy is eight years, we will get back that same amount of dollars because we're about $6,000 a year on our propane, six times eight is 48, and that's at, before the carbon, carbon tax went up on Saturday, that was that Friday's price. So although there's a, there's a cost upfront, we should see that payback over the life of the Olympia, and that's why I'm recommending that we go with the one that does not have fossil fuel um, associated with it. This one, as I said, this, this worries me. Um, I am in conversations with my maintenance coordinator about this because you'd like to stretch it as long as you can, he really feels that we're living on borrowed time. So that's my perspective is concerned for this one.
Councilor Kylie, you have a question?
Yeah, uh, the one that we have now, how old is it?
Ten years.
She said life expectancy isn't, that's amazing.
I know.
But it's fine, it's hard to believe that they're conco in ten years. Anyway, like, same concerns as, uh, counselor Owen.
Councilor Owen?
Uh, did we lose any ice time this year because the Olympia broke down?
Uh, through you, we did not.
Did we lose any ice time last year because the Olympia broke down?
I believe, yes, we did, we had a hydraulic line that, uh, opened up during the game that we had.
So it's not, so it's not breaking down on a regular basis?
You're correct.
Yeah.
Um, Bonnie, is there been any discussion about looking for sponsorship for the purchase of that piece of equipment?
Uh, there is not, no. This, oh, may I, yeah, madam chair? One of the things, because the federal budget did put in their budget the emphasis on reducing our carbon footprint and emissions and things like that, I, I'm hopeful there will be funding that goes along with the announcement that just came, the federal budget last month. There's no guarantee, I mean, I'm always looking for funding to see energy efficiency. We may get something, there's just no guarantee.
Anybody else? Oh, sorry.
Through you, madam chair, uh, so Kirkland, this would be in line with other municipal authorities to do, right? So like, you don't wait until it breaks down to start replacing it, if it, it's like a load or anything else. We anticipate that it's getting old, we need to replace it, so it's not out of your, out of your corner to think that we need this.
Through, Councilor Owen, through the chair, you're, you are correct. There's, um, when I read through the different information articles that we get through Parks and Recreation Ontario and a few other agencies, it seems as if it is the trend, um, most places are replacing right at the eight-year cycle. You don't see a lot that are extending, I'm sure there are some, just like us. Um, it, but what seems to hit the media is eight years, um, taking it out of reserves.
Yeah.
A lot of places do have, um, funding where they put a bit of money aside every year because they know it's about the eight-year trial.
Uh, what happens will be old when this one's replaced.
So that, that's a good question. So there would be resale in, in the one that we currently have, perhaps. Um, you'd have to put it out there to see if anyone wants it. My preference would be to move the, the current one to Civic. Um, the one at Civic is much older and has a lot of emissions, but it does the job and you're outdoors, you can have more emissions outdoors than indoors. But my preference would be to, to, to use the one that we currently use at the community complex at the outdoor area.
Any other questions?
Well, through you, um, madam chair, to you, director of software. You said we hit the year, it's 10 years and we expect eight. You said we hadn't hit the hours, um, and I understand there's a timeline to purchase. Another, how close are we to what they're recommending?
So we checked on Friday, just because of what you may not have got. So we're at 3,400, 3,494 hours on Friday. So that's over eight years. So we are at the 5,000.
5,000.
5,000, it's, but the industry says is eight years or 5,000 hours, whichever comes first. It's not a get to the margin as you can, is what they're recommending.
Right, and when you order it, it could, there's gonna be more than that, so in between two, yes, okay.
If I, if I may, you, um, another thing that we did last time, the Olympia was purchased, it was ordered in, the turnaround was in this grade, it was ordered in probably late summer and we were able to have the cost split between two fiscals for this corporation because of the, they're very expensive. So we were able to pay half in December, half in January, perhaps that's an option if, if, if it's the dollar that's driving the decision.
Councilor Shaba has a question.
Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, madam chair, finance through you to the director. Uh, this ice research officer Olympia, I have a couple of questions. One is that, have you refurbished this in the past? Uh, and if so, uh, what, what was the cost? And can we all, can refurbish this now, instead of trying to buy another one, if you have not refurbished it in the past?
Through you, um, we have not refurbished it, we do general repairs on it on a regular basis. We have not done a refurbishment, I'm not aware of that capability. We have not refurbished it. We do general repairs on it on a regular basis. We have not done a refurbishment. I'm not aware of that capability. It does not seem to be anything I've come across. They're refurbished, but I'm not saying they're, they're not. I'm just not familiar.
Thank you.
Uh, the animal control facilities. Excellent.
Counselor Deacon. Madam Chair, um, what sort of, is there a breakdown somewhere else in there? Like what? Is it just general?
This is related to security system for them and a new door. They had some issues over there. I'm sure it was finding this last year, I guess, in twenty twenty-two. So we're, we're, it was basically, we're trying to make sure it's a safer place to work. It's a safer building overall. That's, that's, I don't know what the breakdown is between the security system, the cameras and the door, but it's, it's the same kind of issue we're trying to address.
Sorry, if the Director is here, if you have questions for him about that.
Sorry?
The Director of that department is here. If you'd like to ask a question about that.
I'm satisfied. Uh, thank you.
Counselor Owen, your, Dan. Oh, I would not.
No, I'm sleeping.
Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, uh, through you, uh, Madam Chair, I just want to know, do we get any, uh, revenue from this facility? Any revenue coming in at all?
Yes, we have some of the, the license fees and, and there's some fees when, when the animals are picked up and, and kept overnight and that kind of thing. I don't know off the top of my head what, how much it is, but we do collect fees for the animal control services.
Thank you.
Not sure. So the next ones are Aqua. They're, they're driven by the recommendations of Aqua. Not sure if you want to keep going one by one on these ones or if there's some.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair, I was wondering, um, this is an area where council, um, we don't have any knowledge. I shouldn't say we don't have any knowledge, but we have very little knowledge. And I know that, uh, our water manager, Brian, uh, part is, big part of his career was in plant operation. So I was wondering if, if Stefan would allow Brian to come up and, and address it so that we can have confidence that what we're spending money on should be spent on.
You know, see, just to point out, it's on its way. There's some projects that were delayed or put down below and that's Aqua actually rates what was on their list. I don't explain it better than I can, but.
Madam Chair, Counselors. Yes, actually, uh, Stefan and I went through everything with a fine-toothed comb. And everything that we were able to push off, which would be a lower I guess a lower, uh, priority item. Um, and then we focused on the must haves. Right now you've got two, uh, filters. One is down, the other one's above, above the fail and that means that the other two remaining are not too far actually be behind that. So we focused, um, on the must haves. And we were actually very successful. I think we pushed close to about a million.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. So in, in your professional opinion, everything that's on this list because we don't want to mess with waters for sewage is a must have.
That's correct.
Okay, great. I feel much more confident now. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay. So we need down with below Aqua. I mean, I'm seeing for the water treatment plant.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, I have, uh, big concerns about this. I read the notes that it's just whatever type plants according to the fence, but I'm not aware of us ever having any problems and I could be wrong and I stand corrected. Is there not a cheaper way of fencing that if we are? Can we not just put up like eight on the road? And extend the fence out from the road as to like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for fencing for something that I, I've never been aware of being a problem. Seems like a lot of money to spend.
I know we're. Yeah, it's not just people driving up to the place that was the issue.
Well, I know people went fishing there, but what's the problem there?
Yeah.
Sure, counsel. Um, yeah, the, the water plant facility is a class three facility with that, which actually requires fencing all the way around. So not only is fencing required, but we're also looking at the cameras. We have had incidents last year where people have successfully broken in. And people do little events around in the bush lines and it becomes a concern as to who will try to get it. It is a class three facility. It's not really, um, a decision that we're making on our own. This is legislative.
Counselor Owen.
Just a follow-up question. Can we condense the fencing then to just around the actual facility like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars since you're off for fencing? Or is it already condensed to just around the buildings?
It would include, it would encompass all the building areas along with, uh, some of the green space around it.
We have to do what we have to do. Sorry.
Any other questions? Counselor Shaba?
Thanks, Stefan.
Oh, I, I didn't want to ask any question, but, uh, if you run out of question, I can ask one. Okay, through you, uh, Madam Chair, I, I'm just going to follow up with, uh, to the Director. Uh, I'm I'm aware of this plant and I understand why you, the fencing would be really needed. Because, uh, you know, you have your fair well and all of that stuff. But why can't you limit the fencing for now to where the clear well is? At least that's the most important part of the uh, waste treatment plant where people can actually compromise, uh, uh, water going out. Why can't we limit the fencing, uh, to, to declare well, a well or wells? And spend less money instead of just for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Your Madam Chair, uh, because the requirements are for the entire facility, not just for the clear wells. It's to limit access to the entire facility, including the grounds. There's a lot of chemicals inside the building that cannot be tempered with. Uh, very dangerous and can become an enormous, uh, environmental concern. The wrong people gain access to that doorway.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, uh, volmatic air release belt. It's a reserve funds. I won't even try the next one, just the turbidity meter. So he's got diagnostic equipment for the waterworks crew. The belly pack transom for the Mack truck.
Counselor Owen.
What is that?
It's a good. Uh, the remote control to essentially the back truck. Unfortunately during the day, somehow disappeared again. And, uh, it's a very useful tool, uh, to increase safety.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, the elevator modernization for the town hall. Just a reminder that half of this expenditure was in last year's budget. We were looking for financing and none of it, it didn't come through. You know, the other half, I guess, total not coming out of the reserves, identified here.
Is this to meet P O D A standards or is this just to upgrade the?
It's to essentially replace the cuts of what we have there mostly because I think of the common sense answer is it just breaks down an awful lot. I, I think we still meet the standards just by posting, saying it's not working right now. I think that's how we kind of meet it, which, you know, really is not adequate in what we're doing here, but standards wise, I think.
Lloyd answered.
Uh, the next one is the, uh, fire alarm upgrade at the police station. It's coming out of the tax levy. Backup generator at the fire hall and the reserve funds. Self-contained breathing apparatus. It's also coming out of reserve funds. The aerial fire truck. I mean, you guys, this has been before council a couple of times. We're best now trying to find appropriately used one that'll, that'll fit our needs and.
Um, through you, Madam Chair to council, uh, while you're correct, we're looking at various options. And one of those options would be a used vehicle. Uh, we could plan on bringing a report to council shortly that will apply various options with this option being one of them. So if council did go down the road of both for a used vehicle, we would have it here. This is important, I can't all but just to recognize the issue now.
To be clear, it's all, it's lease financing, debt financing?
Yeah.
That answer. Thank you, Lloyd.
So regardless of how to go on this one, by leaving it there, there's no impact on the levy whatsoever for this.
Correct.
This year.
You're right.
Yes, the cost can move in the future. Next year we have, we have, it becomes part of their operating.
Wondering if I can just approach you and I wanted to clarify something in regards to the fencing. Um, when we discussed, I forgot to mention, it includes the water tower as well. The water tower is also part of that plant in a sense and they're both legislated and that price included something around the water tower and the water plant. The one that you have to use.
Okay. Yeah, okay. No, thanks Stefan.
So the next one is the radio impagers. Radio hoes and dangers. Here to the tax levy. Uh, tanker gear. Also the tax levy. Okay, and fire hose.
Counselor Deacon. Uh, through, um, Madam Chair, through the Chair, through council, um, just historical data, is this regular things that we just have to keep putting into a regular budget every year or are we paying, playing catch up on some things?
So I think the, the bunker here and the fire hoses, if I understand, there's a regular turnover. Fire hoses in particular, they wear out. Right? So you will, we've had some debate internally about which budget it belongs in, operating in capital. But right now we're just being consistent with the past where it usually shows up on the capital budget. But it really is pretty much an annual cost.
And the, uh, the S, the self-contained breathing apparatus, that's every fifteen years.
Yeah, the two years.
That's what I had.
Yeah. Uh, through you, uh, your worship, um. I think the bumper gear.
Ten years.
It's ten years, but we hadn't been following that policy for quite some time. So we're playing a little bit of catch up and, and replacing all money per year. I, I understand that's methodology.
Yeah.
You know, I was better understood the exact details of it, but yeah, you're correct.
Okay, yeah.
Counselor Owen.
Through you, uh, Madam Chair, to P A O. The, the radio pager, that's a safety issue, is it not? That grade them to current standards?
I believe that's part of the, uh, Madam Chair to council. I believe that is a partly upgrade. Is that regarding to that?
So that, that's everything that was recommended by your staff. There's some items down below that were deferred or put off. Whether you want to consider them is entirely in your purview to do. Um, I'd be open to, if you have any general questions. You know, the capital budget is very similar to the operating budget in a lot of ways, but we have it's typically financed more often with, with debt and reserve transfers than operating with it. So.
Would it be possible, um, to clarify for me what could potentially, the things that were removed? What the authority level would be for those things based just on those things like where we may see them next year or the time they're going to come back?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we use that level system. And the one we, we've inherited from a few years ago. So, you know, fours are things that are broken. There are things that have to be replaced. There's no recovering them. The threes are things that are basically on a lot, uh, not necessarily broken, but they need to be replaced based on life or the state they're in. Twos and ones obviously fall a little bit below that. As far as risk of what could go wrong, I'm not sure I can answer that question properly. You know, off the cuff anyways. Yeah, I'm not, I mean, we could maybe perhaps throw something together for you as part of the answer to the questions that we're going to have at the next meeting. A short description of what the risks are, not, not including them in the capital budget.
Yeah, there's some big ticket items for Aqua that are not on for this year, but going forward. We just, we have to create an auction plan, tell her to manage them so they're not a big ticket item in one fiscal year.
Yeah, and that's, i- it's a good comment in the sense of what I mentioned earlier about the asset management plan. The asset management plan is going to kind of give us a list and then it's going to be up to staff and yourselves to kind of say what has to happen this year based on, you know, knowledge of your staff and, and, and obviously finances. So this process you're, you're suggesting it fits very well with where we're, we're going to end up anyways. With the asset management. So.
Any other?
Um, I'm sure, just for clarification, the, once you refer to for wastewater and water Aqua, it says like seven hundred thirty thousand, two hundred seventy-five off the tax levy. I thought we couldn't go get the tax levy for water and wastewater. So is this just an error where they're placed or?
No, I, that's where they were placed in the original submission.
Okay.
Um, in theory, you could use reserves or debt or depending on what they are.
Water side. So someone asks.
Yeah, sorry. But I, you know, yes, you're correct. It's either tax levy, I guess you could say water, wastewater.
Like that's a million dollars, but not close to a million dollars off the tax levy. That would be scary for them.
Yeah, it would increase. It would not come, I don't know which ones they are, but likely it's out of water and wastewater. I mix of the two. And you're right, there's, you know, the, the reserves in water and wastewater would be able to absorb those kind of expenditures for more than two or three years at most. So.
Counselor.
Through you, your worship, uh, for curiosity. For what we have in reserve for wastewater and water. If you don't have enough in there, can you draw on our regular reserve?
So that's a bit of a loaded question. In a sense that water is legislated to pay its own way.
Pay its way.
Right? And, and, and the policy within the town of Kirk, I don't, sorry, maybe mischaracterizing whether it's a policy or not. But the position the town is taking with those waters is essentially the same thing. It should pay its own way as well. There are outside funds. It's not just the water rates and wastewater rates. So for example, um, the, you know, the O C F identifies infrastructure and it specifically has on its list of things that are acceptable. Water and wastewater type projects. So there is other funding. You know, we haven't applied it recently in those two areas. Um, but yeah, you're right. Yes, they're, they're supposed to be self-sustained. We haven't applied it recently in those two areas. Um, but yeah, you're right. Yes, they're, they're supposed to be self-sustained.
Yeah, because we're hoping at one to two million dollars next year from the heavy hit. Just on rates and reserve.
Yeah, and a quick, a quick comment, uh, it doesn't look like that that's up in the near future. You know, there's, there's, there's a consistent tap of things that have to be done with the water and the water system over the next few years, so. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody, do any counselors have?
Me, Madam Chair, um, just in terms of process. Are we going to be walking voter asking questions about the reserve fund? Is that, or is this just it for today? Like that, I don't know what the process is.
Okay. I can, I can do my best off the top of my head, and anything I can answer, I'll have a proper prepared question, answer for you. Um, so, you know, reserves are intricately associated with capital. So like, you know, I'm certainly asking questions about the reserves at this point, wouldn't, I don't think it causes any problems danger wise.
Okay, uh, yes, uh, to Madam Chair, to the friend or to the CEO or um, maybe the public works. We had a ten-year plan that was presented, and, and it was subject to funding. Um, I'm just wondering just a high level view, if, if we were to get, um, and huge funding, and I know there's funding formulas or mechanisms. Do we have enough in reserve that we could, like, I, I'm not sure where we stand in terms of, like, the ones, and the, the infrastructure, the rooms, the, and so we started, uh, on that. So that's just my um, review questions.
Well, I'll give, I'll give you a general answer this evening. Um, essentially, you know, if everything came to the way the asset management plan from last year and the one that's in the works now came due in timelines that they suggested, you know, the reserves aren't, aren't adequate to beat that right now. Um, but to put you a little bit at ease, you know, the model is designed to pull from tax levies from outside funding sources, from debt. And, you know, wherever else we can scrape together the dollars. So, um, you know, it's in the last few years, we've had a very large increase in our reserves and reserve funds, mostly on the operating side. And, you know, it's well within your, your purview again, if you wanted to, you know, revisit how much of that's belongs in operating and how much of those reserves emerge, you could associate with capital. Um, so, you know, the short answer is you know, they're, they're very healthy reserves and reserve funds, but I think like most municipalities, they're, they're not going to be the answer in the long term. Um, to, you know, fully fund what we, we know is coming.
Uh, Madam Chair, yeah, my question, I, I know that we can't fully fund, but if it's a four to one or a five to one, I, I'm just thinking Timmons got a huge, um, funding last year. If we got a third of that, would we be in a position to be able to have reserves or would we have to borrow? Like, that's just kind of my big question.
You know, if we could find financing similar to what we got, say, for the Swistika project. Um, you know, these reserves look really robust. It looked a lot better because we had very high percentage funding on that particular project. Um, you know, that's not usually the case, but when you can find it and grab it and use it, you know, it's it's really a function of higher levels of government and what they're budgeting. And how much they're kind of streaming down to us. Um, and, you know, they have their, their pet areas as well. So, you know, we fully expect maybe water and wastewater will benefit from the new, the environmental kind of focus for here through the two, the two budgets. But yeah, there's no particular way to say yes unless we, unless they provided some kind of a plan. On, they have provided a plan for OSIF and gas tax in the short term, like, you know, a couple of years out. Um, which is incorporated in the asset management plan, but again, it's, it's a very short-term type of disclosure. Um, we're at the, the whim of the higher levels of government when it comes to finding financing outside of whatever we can raise ourselves.
Counselor Owen.
Yes, another question is just a comment. I want to thank, uh, the Directors and staff for putting together the rationale be, behind their decisions, because I went through the numbers first with my highlighter, and you answered half my questions, so you made the meaning of half this one. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No. Uh, moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. The result that council received for twenty twenty-three capital budget presentation for information groups. All in favor? Any opposed? You got the next one.
Okay, I now resume the chair. As the budget presentations for this evening have concluded. Item number seven, considerations and notices of motion. As it's a special meeting, there are none. Item number eight, introduction, reading and consideration of bylaws. There are none. Item number nine, questions from council to staff. There are none. Item number ten, notices of motion. Again, there are none. Item number eleven, counselors report. There are none. Item number twelve, additional information. There is none. Item number thirteen, closed session. We will not be still moving this evening. Item number fourteen, matters from closed session. There are none. Item number fifteen, confirmation bylaw.
Moved by Counselor Patrick Kylie, seconded by Counselor Janice Ranger. The resolve of the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the Mayor, Minister, and the Seal of the Corporation, the sixth, third, Q. Bylaw number twenty-three, twenty-three, being a bylaw confirmed the proceedings of council at special meeting held people of twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed? There are none. Item carried unanimous. Item sixteen, adjournment.
Moved by Counselor Yolanda Iken. Seconded by Counselor Janice Ranger. Be resolved at this special meeting. The council do now adjourn at five thirty-seven P M.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. Good evening.